Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. It's Monday, November 20th, 2017. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
City Council members, Ammons.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Hazen.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wu.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Approval of minutes from the previous meeting of November 6th, 2017. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion for approval?
So move.
So move.
Moved by Erin, seconded by...
I'll second.
Jared. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes. Any additions to the agenda? Okay. Public input, I have one card submitted by the public, Daryl Cruz. And I do want to note, for the public in the council, UPTV is having some technical difficulties with cameras and until the hardware is returned to us for repair, we won't be able to, the viewing public won't be able to see the ordinance numbers displayed on the screen. So we're going to be repeating the ordinance resolution titles and numbers more often than we typically do, just so people know which one we're talking about. Thanks. Go ahead, Daryl.
Yeah. Thank you. Good evening. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Same to you.
I want to bring to your attention a possible concern that has occurred in the past that appears it's going to happen again. I've been in email conversation, contact with Melissa Haynes, the statistician, and I'm not sure if you're aware or not, but she is planning to make her UPD traffic stop presentation next Monday. And in conversation with her, I asked if her presentation would be available to the public before the city council meeting, and she informed me that it would not be, that she probably would not have it prepared for the public to see it before next Monday's meeting. As you know, that's what occurred last July, and a month before that, and I was assured by the city council that the scheduling of the presentation, the material for that presentation would be made available to the public. I want to emphasize, I'm not sure why this is occurring again in this way, I just became aware of it in email exchanges with her, but it's really, really important when city staff make presentations to the city council, that those presentations or reports are included in the Friday packet, that are made available to the public, so the public can have access to it and read it and come and make comment at the next city council meeting. The fact that she even was thinking, or the city council would accept her to make that presentation again without the public having access to it is problematic in the ability of the community to be aware and to respond to what the city council is considering. I would like to, if you can recall, you know, back in July, because I waited three and a half months, or four months, they're supposed to be done quarterly, there were a number of things the city council said it was going to do. I won't mention them tonight, I'll mention them next Monday night, if the presentation goes on, which I hope it doesn't. But what I would like you to do is, there's a real simple solution. Simply check with the UPD and ask them if the presentation can be repaired in advance and included in the packet for the public to see by Friday, or simply have them scheduled to next Monday, so that it can occur. If the presentation is made and not made available, your word to the public that you've committed to transparency and openness, and what you have told me in the past, simply will be hollow. Thank you.
Eric.
So your request is that, if I understand you correctly, is that the, this, seeing this item on the agenda should be postponed until it can be included in the packet?
Well, either to just check with Melissa and see if she, I think it's because of the Thanksgiving holiday coming up, that there may be some, I'm not sure, difficulty getting completed to be included by Friday, so she said in the email exchange, which I sent to several of the city council members, that it is unlikely to be made public before Monday. I would just check to see if it can be. If it can't, then ask that it just be postponed until it can be the following Monday.
Yeah, I don't...
I don't know, I just would hate to come, you know, it's just troubling to me to think that you could not be aware and not know. This is something, and then the public has to start monitoring staff and city council to make sure presentations are available ahead of city council meetings. I find that troubling. I shouldn't have to be doing that. Okay.
I'll comment on that. Actually, not all presentations are made available. Many of the presentations that staff make are not included in the packet for a variety of reasons. Number one is they work on them till the very last minute. Number two, in this case, it is Thanksgiving weekend, and number three, with the type of presentation this is and the type of analyses that are being done, our analyst, Melissa, and, and I concur actually in this case, she prefers to be able to make the initial presentation in person and be able to respond to questions and, and make clarifications that come up. What we can do however, is schedule a follow-up discussion the very next week after the presentation on Monday, to answer and address any questions that come out of the presentation. And then once, once the, after the meeting next week, it will be, of course, on the website for further review. So we can schedule an agenda item for December 4th to have a follow-up discussion on this. But I'm going, I'm going to, but I'm going to respect my staff's request to do it this way, just so they make sure that the information is presented in a way, in a consistent manner, and, and for the, for the information to be presented with their explanation at the time.
Okay. And I respect that comment and your position. I would simply restate that when that occurred in the past, I was assured it wouldn't happen again.
I'm not...
On this report, oh, I absolutely was. No, I could go back, you know, that did, and then the only other thing I would say in the past also, and correct me if I'm wrong, any city council meeting after that last presentation, has the city council had a follow-up meeting on that presentation regarding the traffic stop report? Because I prepared a nine-page report when I found out there wasn't going to be any follow-up and sent it to you in terms of a summary, three months ago, that nobody responded to, and there was not a follow-up meeting, and nobody has told the public that you were scheduling a follow-up meeting for this presentation. If in fact, you include that so the public's aware of it, that's great, okay? All I can tell you, the track record of the city council on this issue, I've heard that and I understand it, but I also know that presentations have been made, they've not been made available to the public beforehand, and there have not been follow-up meetings. So if you can assure that that's scheduled in that sequence, that's another solution.
Well, we will, we can very well schedule a follow-up discussion on December 4th.
I think that would be beneficial for council members, if they don't see it till that night. I've heard several city council members mention, it's very difficult to be able to think about the types of questions I would like to ask when the presentation is being made. So if a follow-up study session or period is provided, that will do it. But that hasn't been the case in the past. So that would be an improvement in this regard.
Thank you. Mary Ellen.
So I'm wondering, I think I've been here for one presentation from Melissa, and so far she's provided PowerPoint slides. So my question is this, is it, at the end of the year, is there an actual written report, or is it always a presentation kind of on a quarterly basis?
So far it's been a presentation on a quarterly basis.
Because I think that's something that maybe we should think about, having a formal report after a certain amount of time. It kind of summarizes things. I know that, I mean, I did talk to Melissa afterwards, and we talked about kind of the process and the questions and so forth, and then one of the things that she was talking about was, this is a new process. And then anytime you generate a new process for collecting data, it's a bit rocky in the beginning, and I know that she spent a lot of time trying to standardize all of those categories and so forth, so it would be great to hear kind of an update after a year of collecting the data, on how that process is going and what we should think about in terms of collecting data.
And I do know some council members met individually with Melissa after the last report, not all, but some.
I think that's great. The problem is, the public isn't, have access to council conversation and public regarding it, the public's response to it. So that works maybe for city council members, but it doesn't work for the public if there's no follow-up meeting, or if there's not a chance.
I understand.
That's, and let me make this real quick. Melissa has been really super great. Every email I've sent her information, she's responded. I have no criticism of the police department, or the presentation or her as a person. It's just the system, the...
Process.
Timing of how this is unfolding. It's repeating itself as it's done at least once or twice in the recent past, and I was assured it wouldn't happen again, and it's right on the brink of happening again. So I just bring it to your attention a week ahead of time. Hopefully there can be a solution or remedy that meets your needs and the public's needs also. That's...
Thank you. Eric.
So, thank you, Daryl, for coming back and to staying on top of the issue. Now, this is not a typical report. This is not a typical presentation. This has been one of the hottest topics that we've dealt with in the city for a long time, and to categorize it as if it's a typical report by staff about various different things that staff may do a presentation about, is just not, I don't think that's the appropriate way to, to look at this situation. It's a very sensitive topic for us, and I did say at the last time when Melissa presented that I want the information before Melissa comes and presents it. And as a city council member, then staff is supposed to be responsive to those requests, is my understanding. And so I understand that it's a lot of work, and like Daryl said, or any of us, I think it's reasonable. If you're working up to the last minute to get it for tonight, fine, let's present it the next night, and send us the information ahead of time so that we can review the information and look at it, look over it, and be prepared to ask questions. Because if she comes and does a presentation, or if any staff member comes and does a presentation, and all we could do is look at it or listen to it at that particular point, it takes me a little time to process some things. I may want to look at the information and have questions prepared. So I don't think it's appropriate for her to, or any staff member, if we request, and particularly if we request to have it prior, for it not to be provided for us so that we can see it. And this is not a typical situation. And if we made a promise collectively, and I'm not exactly sure if we did that or not, but I don't see why Mr. Cruz would come in here and say that we did something that we didn't do, but I think it's appropriate, I think it's a best practice for us to say if this is a request, then we should, we should provide it. And I don't understand why it's, it's got to be a last-minute thing, especially when we know ahead of time that it's going to be done quarterly. Why is it taken until the last very minute to do that? Maybe you can help me understand that. Sylvia, can you help us understand why that would be the case?
My recollection of the conversation last time, I recall them asking, everybody asking for it ahead of time, and I believe at that time, I also said that I believe that, that the best way to present the information was to do that in person, so that she had an opportunity to explain everything and to make, to present it in such a fashion, so that everybody had the same information at the same time, explained the same way. I, I think I also said at the last meeting that I also would like to have any follow-up questions the next time we would come back, the next week, so that everybody had time to look at it once they had received the information, process it, have any questions, and we could come back the next week to answer any questions that could be, that anybody would have after that. And more unhappy to do that at this time as well. She doesn't have it ready, because I told her she needed to have it ready for the 27th, because that was kind of what we talked about last time, and that's where my mind was at the time, was that's how we were going to do it again, because of it being such an in-depth and technical topic and needing to, for her to be able to explain it as she presented it, so there weren't any misinterpretations, or there were, if there were any questions at the moment as far as how she got this or that, could ask those, and then we could come back for follow-up questions.
So, from an administrative standpoint, it doesn't seem to be a best practice, in my opinion, or fair to the public for us to say to staff, and we have a quarterly report that we know is due, and it's not done until 4:59 on the 27th, or something like that. I don't quite understand why that would be a practice that we would want to continue. If we know that this is coming, it's a quarterly report, we know that it's a hot topic, how much time that Melissa or any other staff member would need to do the presentation so that we would have it up front, then that's a lot of them that time. But to say, or to use as a reason why we don't get it, that we still working on it up to the very last minute before the presentation, it doesn't sound like a finished presentation, even if that's the case.
So, I'm not saying that, that it couldn't be done in the future. I disagree with doing it that way. I told her it did not need to be done until the 27th, when we presented it. So now, being, especially this being a holiday week, there's no way for it to be completely finished in time for it to be in the packets for next Monday.
Okay, so then...
And I don't agree with it being presented that way.
Okay, so, just help me understand, because as the city council, or as a city council, as an alderman, if I make the request to you as staff and say, I want to see that before you release it, because it's that important to me as a alderman, and I want the public to be able to see it as well, but certainly I want to see it, you're saying that you're not, you're just going to override that and tell Melissa to release it when you want it to release it? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
No, I did not get a clear directive from the council last time, that that was what I was supposed to do this time, Erin. I, that's not what I heard last time. So if I, if that, am I mistaken, and that was a directive from the city council to do that, then that's my fault, because I did not understand that. That's what I'm saying.
So, this month, we'll plan on a follow-up meeting on December 4th.
And so this is another problem that I'm having, because now you're saying that you're going to exercise your authority to say that we're just not going to get the information? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
You're getting the information next Monday. And yes, actually, I do have the authority to say that.
And I'm not trying to question that. I'm just trying to make sure I understand, because...
Yes.
As an alderman, and I think the public wants to see this, and we know that this is a hot topic, I'm not quite sure why any staff member would say, hey, wait until I present it on the 27th, and then that following Monday, you can ask me questions, when you can simply give me the information before the 27th, and I could be prepared for your presentation on the 27th. It seems to be kicking the can down the road for no unnecessary, for no necessary reason. I don't understand, what is the reason why the information has to be presented first by staff for us to hear it, and then come back the next week to do it? I don't understand the sequence of events. I don't understand why that is so important, as opposed to us getting it first.
Because you'll be, you would be getting just the PowerPoints, without an extensive verbal explanation that goes along with it. And at this point, there is not a written report. So looking at the PowerPoints without the explanation, I think can lead to a lot of confusion.
So when will the written report be done?
At this point, there isn't an extensive written report. These are verbal updates. If you would like a written report, we can get that for the future, but for this next Monday, there's a verbal presentation. So to present the slides without the explanation accompaniment is, is, there's really no point to it.
So...
So it was our decision to go this route. If we want to discuss another way, we can do that, but for next week, there will be a presentation, the following week, on the 4th, we can have the follow-up discussion.
So you're saying that the presentation will be slides and commentary by Melissa, right?
Like last time, yes.
Okay, so then that means that Melissa will have prepared remarks for those slides, correct?
Verbal, yes.
But they will be prepared for those slides? So they could be given to us ahead of time?
But they're not written.
But they could be written, right? Is that correct?
They could be, but for this presentation, they won't be.
Because she doesn't want to, or because someone's instructing her not to?
At this point, there's not enough time to do it. We can do it for the following report.
No, but it could also be done where, not this Monday, like the 27th, but there could be a written report done to accompany it the following Monday, so that we would have all the information. If it's just simply that instruction is given to Melissa, is that correct?
So doing an extensive written report, like she would do, I don't, if you've seen other reports from her, it's, it takes, it's very time-consuming for her to write that out. Right now, she has just notes on, on the things that she's going to speak about as she's preparing the slides. So in order to get that into what would be an official, formal report for her to give out, would also take too much time, and being a holiday week, there's no way she could get that done tomorrow, and also still continue to prepare for the slides on...
And I get that, especially if you wait until the, the holiday weekend to start to prepare it. So I understand why it wouldn't be enough time at that particular point, but maybe it could have been worked on the week prior in preparation for this report that we know is going to be done quarterly, and that it's a very sensitive and very important report that needs to be done. So, since we're at that particular moment, even if the slides were presented, there's some information one could garner from seeing the slides, seeing the graphs, or whatever it is going to be, some of it's more detailed, and that we could filter through that information as best we could, and then be better prepared when we see it, when it comes to us before, when it's being presented. I think that's a very reasonable thing. I don't see how any of us as city council members would be so overwhelmed by a set of slides, that it would just boggle our minds, that we wouldn't understand at all what we're looking at. It may give us a better framework and foundation for us to be able to ask questions, especially since we've been dealing with this for quite a while now. So I don't see anything that's going to be presented that's just going to be so complex that I just can't even get any sort of, I can't pull anything out of it that would help me formulate important questions. So I'm just really disappointed, actually pretty, I feel that this is a, an intentional desire by whomever, to make sure that we only get the information at a particular time to control the way it's being disseminated, and that is not consistent with the transparency that we promised the public, and that was promised to some of us here as council members. So I just want to make sure that, that's clear.
Eric.
Based on many decades of presenting material in lectures with slides, I think the idea that, of first presenting the material with commentary, and then following that up in the following week with the follow-up discussions, is a really good way to be sure that everybody understands it as well as possible.
And I'll say it one more time, and then we're finished with this part. We will have a follow-up discussion on December 4th, and the presentation will be next Monday, November 27th. Thank you, Daryl. Next up, Jane DeLuce, from Visit Champaign County.
I'm delighted to introduce Jane DeLuce, President and CEO of Visit Champaign County. She was here a few weeks ago, so not a large introduction. You can take it over.
Thank you. Thanks for a few minutes to talk about how Visit Champaign County drives economic growth to this area. As the certified destination management organization for the greater Champaign County area, which also includes Monticello, Allerton, and Arthur, we focus on sales, marketing, and enhancing our destination to bring in visitors through meetings, sports, international groups, and leisure. When I spoke briefly on October 9th, which was for the purpose of signing our fiscal year 18 agreement, you all received a copy of the fiscal year 17 annual report, the visitor's guide, and the Midwest Living magazine, which features our area being named the greatest Midwest food town. So imagine those materials in front of you tonight. But tonight, I want to show you our most recent performance recap video, and it's Welcome to Champaign County, and it was made during National Travel and Tourism Week, under the theme, the national theme of Faces of Travel, and it was shown at our Toast to Tourism. So I'm going to start with that.
Oops. I throw 'em on fire. Oh, shoot.
Welcome to Center of Gallery.
Hush, welcome to Champaign.
Welcome, minion and champagne, Urbana.
Welcome to Allerton, where we are truly outside of ordinary.
Welcome to Champaign County.
Hi, welcome to Champaign County.
Is that one of the blind papers?
Welcome to Champaign County and Hardee's Reindeer Ranch.
Hey, welcome to Monticello.
Welcome to Champaign County.
Welcome to Champaign County.
Welcome, Champaign County.
Welcome to Japan House.
So the video in the annual report highlight over $380 million in direct visitor spending and 2,990 tourism-related jobs in the greater Champaign County area this past year. These numbers come directly from the U.S. Travel Association and show that tourism is big business in this community. So the top five highlights to remember from fiscal year 17. One was bringing in the National Hot Rod Power Tour in June, which welcomed over 3,000 hot rodders, generating over 1.5 million in economic impact on one stop during their seven-day, seven-city tour. Two, creating new welcome centers at the airport, the Illinois Terminal, rebranding the, the center at Marketplace Mall, moving into our new office at 17 East Taylor, and adding a mobile visitor center. Three, expanding the use of video in our branding efforts, which for example, we shot live Facebook video last season from Urbana's Market, featuring Ms. Natalie and a lot of the vendors. And four, we booked future groups, 66 future groups in our sports meetings and group tour markets, more than a, one group per week. Our efforts focus on new tourism growth markets, with staff coordinating a variety of sales blitzes, and participating in trade shows such as the African-American Travel Conference, the Active America Travel China Summit, Diversity Marketplace, IPW, and National Association of Sports Commissions. For groups, we featured Autumn Berry, Prairie Foods Farm, Berkey's, and Riggs Brewery for the annual agritourism Follow the Farmstead event, which is geared towards international student visitors and families. And during Farm Progress Show, a group of Brazilian farmers had a private dinner at Willow Creek Farm and stayed at the Wyndham. Five, we've mentioned it before, and we'll keep talking about it, we're celebrating our awesome food scene, including the recognition as the greatest Midwest living food town, reaching over 3 million Midwest living readers. And we hosted the first-ever Champaign County Area Restaurant Week in early 2017, which we're already planning to make bigger and better in 18. Our overall goal is to build stronger brand equity, increase visitor traffic, and grow area business. The travel industry has created jobs at a faster rate than any other industry, and one of every nine jobs in the U.S. depends on travel and tourism. We continue... We continue to guide our destination management efforts through our Destination 2020 Strategic Plan. Our key priorities that were established are choreographing a strategic destination management framework to expand our reputation for excellence and credibility, to drive business in our target visitor markets, and to build a sustainable funding model. So as we are into fiscal year '18, we're going to expand the new regional film office, such as the Squair Filming on Main Street for the Tapman's Towing commercial that happened, further driving the business market so that we have weekday traffic, Monday through Thursday are the big times that we're working on, including a bid on a national, I feel like I'm going in and out on the, national conference that would greatly impact our area, build our private, the VCC Foundation, as we work towards a locally-funded business model, and more use of social media and video for content management, and also building this hospitality network that strengthens our local cohesive support among hotels, retail, restaurants, vendors, and attraction, which we've already hosted two successful tourism summits. Specific to sports, we hosted the Illinois Women's State Bowling Tournament last spring. And after hosting the American Cornhole Organization Midwest Major for the second time just last month, as of today, we are planning to announce a new major sport event that'll come out later this week. It is an off-year for hosting IHSA State Football this weekend, but there will be a home football game against Northwestern. And we're working, already working on IHSA State Wrestling in February, the Christie Clinic Illinois Marathon in April, and gearing up for the many U-Soccer, Baseball, and other sport events that drive business here. Our success as a destination management organization comes from our strategic partners, our regional marketing partners, our hotel partners, and our new foundation partners, which are all listed in your publications. We've got a great team, so a shout-out to Terry on the marketing team, Leah and Ryan on the sales and events team, and Jen and Brooke on the admin team. So thank you to all of you for your gold partnership. We're excited where the future brings us. I like to come every year to be able to not only thank you in person, but to talk about what our performance reporting is, because that's so important, and to be transparent to our stakeholders. We'll continue to do the quarterly reports, which you will receive. We'll do the annual report, which you've already received a copy of, and was available to answer any questions or for any input about how we can make this area an even better destination that drives business here. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Jane? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Natalie. Eric?
I guess I'd just say one thing. Do you have much interaction with Rachel Storm, our public arts person? And the reason I say that is that she has some wonderful visuals, including some great videos. And I think there may be things that you can, you know, that would be useful in your promotion, so I would, I, well, I'll urge her to contact you. And I'm suggesting that you might contact her.
Yeah, like, yeah, we do have a very good relationship with her, and also we have the Arts Council with Kelly White in our office, and Kelly works so much with her. So for the events happening that just happened this past weekend, for the sculptures that are in the area, so a lot of that is already happening, but we would always welcome more communication and information.
We saw a fantastic music video at the last Public Arts Commission meeting that was shot all over town. It was, it was a story video about, about a couple, a young man and a young woman. But it was just, but it really showcased the community. And of course, it was just Urbana, and you've got to, you know, think about the whole county, but it was just really, I would, I would say anybody who looks at it would smile and think, hey, this is really a lovely place to come.
We had a, I think, very good interaction, and it was funny today, if I can just say real quickly, Terry from our staff spoke to new recruits for the Carl Illinois College of Medicine. And there was a surgeon that was there from Carl, and he saw a couple of the videos, and he said, boy, I live here, and this makes me want to move here. And it was just such a great response to be able to do that. So having, if she's got that, and maybe Terry's already seen it, I don't know if I'm familiar with it, but I love that idea, and that's how we storytell is, through video. So thank you for sharing that.
It was a musician to whom we had given a grant, and he and his, you know, group just produced this amazing thing.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We're also, to follow up on that, Eric, a Welcome to Urbana-type video is also in the works as well. That's being produced in-house. Okay, unfinished business, seeing none. Reports of Standing Committee. Dean?
Okay, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I will move Resolution Number 2017-11-072R, a resolution estimating the tax levy fiscal year 2017-2018.
I'll second.
Moved by Dean, seconded by Jared. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmembers Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes. Dean?
One second, please. Uh, Dean's just giving me a second to recuse myself from voting on this measure as the State Liquor Control Act of 1932? 34? Okay, one of these types. Keeps me from being able to vote on this. Thanks.
Okay, other than that, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I will move Ordinance Number 2017-11-066, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing number of Class C liquor licenses for Go Brands Incorporated, DBA Go Puff, 1908 North Lindview, Unit 1W, Urbana, Illinois 61801.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Bill?
Just have a follow-up question about, last week, we talked about enforcement a little bit, and it came to our attention that the people delivering are actually contractors. They aren't employees of the, of the business. So I wonder how that affects enforcement and ability to regulate the business itself? If it's a buyer, and we can take away their liquor license if they serve somebody underage. If it's a contractor delivering the liquor, and the person is underage, and they, you know, give it to them anyway, does it affect what we can do with the liquor license?
If you're talking, if you're talking about the license or you're considering...
Can you speak into the microphone, Jim?
I am, and it's on.
Okay.
If you're talking about the licensee that is before you tonight, yes. That person would be facilitating the underage selling of liquor. Frankly, when it's all said and done, it's really not much different than what you've approved already with curb-side delivery as well as individuals who are physically handling the liquor, whether they're in package stores, or whether they're in restaurants or bars. It is enforceable. The enforcement action is against two individuals. If the, excuse me, two persons. If the individual, whether a contractor or an employee, is underage, he or she will receive a notice to appear in court. The, once that person, if that person is found guilty or pleads guilty, which is usually the case for underage serving or dispensing of alcohol, then a notice of violation is issued to the licensee. It's not handled through the court, it's handled through the local liquor commissioner. Typically, we offer a plea and settlement agreement to resolve the matter. If they don't choose that, which includes a fine and a stipulation, a violation, then if the liquor licensee chooses not to pursue that route, a public hearing would be held before the local liquor commissioner, which of course is our mayor.
Okay, I think that's a little more detail than I was looking for, but I think, so what you're saying was the, whether it's a contractor that's hired by the licensee or an employee who is hired, say contractor who is contracted by the licensee, or an employee who is hired by the licensee, it doesn't make a difference. We can still enforce.
Well, there is one difference, and that is the contractor. If the contractor is hiring out people to dispense liquor, they're engaged in the sale and service of liquor, and they better have a liquor license.
I don't think they were planning to do that. The contractor was the delivery driver, basically.
The what?
The delivery driver was the contractor.
Like a taxi driver.
Okay. Okay, just make sure we're on the same page. Thanks.
Another questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmembers Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Roberts?
No.
Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Dean?
Okay, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I'll move Ordinance Number 2017-11-067, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year 2017-2018, Budget Amendment Number 4, Public Works Covered Material Bends.
I'll second.
Moved by Dean, seconded by Jared. Any questions? Discussion? The clerk, please call the roll.
City Councilmembers Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
And Mayor Marlin votes yes, too.
And Mayor Marlin. Thank you.
Next up?
Okay, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I'll move...
Enough electricity that they would actually be better off in terms of price to be on the Ameren 2-tier rate rather than our municipal electric aggregation fixed rate. Aside from that, Councilor Brown is working on a calculator that we potentially could link to our city website, where folks could plug in their own electricity usage and make that determination for themselves as well. And I'm happy to take any other questions.
This is Scott Tess, our Environmental Sustainability Manager, speaking. Any other questions for Scott?
Yeah, thanks, Scott. Did they quantify that at all, besides very few? I know, we looked up the census stats, and about 13% to 14% of owner-occupied houses use all-electric, and it looked like it would be pretty close for, unless you had really super-efficient furnaces and well-insulated house, it would be kind of break-even for the standard house. And if you had a larger house, it's very possible that you'd be better off going without the aggregation.
What they quantified was the average monthly electricity usage, which is not precise enough to say exactly how many. I'm not sure that we have, and I'll do a little bit more looking, but the consultant didn't believe that we had the level of detail, such as the monthly electricity use per household in order to make a determination if there were households that really had eight months of electricity usage that was high enough that they would be better off on the Ameren 2-tier price.
Okay, yeah, the problem with averages, when you're averaging very high load numbers and very low numbers, you're going to get an average. A lot of times, the students leave for a couple of months, so that reduces their usage in the small apartments. And, you know, my average is 200 to 300 kilowatts per hour, and I think the city average is 600 or something. So somebody's using a lot more.
Sure.
But thanks for that, and I think if we do put a calculator up, at least people will be able to check for themselves and get an estimate. The other thing I wanted to thank you for was to actually, I think this is the first time, or in, we skipped a period, but originally, I think, when the aggregation program started, they had the price that we were paying for the REX, and you have that in there, and it's point 00057 dollars, a very small number. It comes out to 57 cents per megawatt hour, so I think at my usage, I'm paying about $1.70 a year, or something like that, to use what they're calling green power. So it's a pretty good deal, and, you know, surprised we have any kind of global warming, if that's all it takes. But I think the transparency is important. That's what the Utility Board recommends.
Any other questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmembers Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Dean?
Okay, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I move Resolution Number 2017-11-074R, a resolution in support of Illinois bicentennial celebration.
I'll second.
Moved by Dean, seconded by Dennis. Any further discussion? I would point out that the actual bicentennial date is December 3rd, 2017, so it's coming up soon, and, well, okay. 2018? Okay, 2018. Except we're raising the flag this year.
Yes.
My confusion is...
It's a whole one-year celebration.
Right, okay. Starts on December 3rd, 2017, through December 3rd, 2018. Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmembers Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Dean.
Thank you.
Reports of special committees. Reports of officers. John Schneider, Community Development Services Manager.
Just one correction in one report.
Be sure to speak into the microphone.
Okay. I passed these out before the meeting. You should each have a copy of this. This is a correction. Last week, I indicated that the emergency grant program provided up to $5,000 per household. It actually was increased in the last annual action plan. A five-year consolidated plan is now $8,000 per household to income-qualified households. And the income limits is on the back of that pamphlet. And this also describes other programs that are provided through grants management for citizens.
Eric?
The brochure, the version of this that's on the website is obsolete, should be updated.
Correct. I've asked staff to go ahead and update that. The other announcement was Lori sent out, Lori Pearson sent out an email to council members that indicated that the University Campus Master Plan has been finalized, and the University of Illinois is having presentations of the master plan, and they have invitation out to meetings on November 28th and 29th. And meeting on November 28th from 3:00 to 4:30 p.m. at Beckman Institute Auditorium, Room 1025, on the 28th later, from 5:30 to 7:00 at the Illini Union, Room 314B. And November 29th, the next day, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. at the Student Dining and Residential Programs Building, 301 East Gregory Champagne, in the multipurpose room. And that information is all included in the email that Lori Pearson, the planning manager, sent out to council this earlier today.
Jared?
John, could you just, real briefly, just in case anybody doesn't understand what a 50% of MFI or 80% of what MFI for the family size means?
The, these numbers are promulgated by HUD every year annually, and it's the median family income for households of that size that are, that's indicated. So it's like the, the average or the median, the median is like this, I don't know how they exactly, they calculate it, but it's like at the 50% level of the annual income, the average annual income for everybody in the county. So the median, as an example, for a family of four, 50% of the median would be 34,750. That would mean that the median would be at 69,500 a year for a family of four.
And how, and how does that relate to the percentage that residents qualify for?
Well, basically, if the, if the household in the program, depends on the program, there's an 80%, and if the access grant program, I believe, is available to households, I'd have to check this to be sure, it's 80%. So the access grant is for 80% median. The emergency grant is for households at 50% of the median. So, I mean, for different programs, there's a different range of income that people could have to qualify to get the assistance.
So for a single person living alone, paying, you know, for an apartment somewhere, if they work at McDonald's and they make $18,000 a year, and they decide to get a home at some point in time, or something like that, and end up qualifying for something, but they still make under this $24,350, then they would qualify for the entirety of the emergency grant?
Correct. Correct, the $8,000.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions? Thanks. Thanks. Any other reports of officers? Bill Gray, Public Works.
Good evening, we're in the planning stages, so I want to alert you to a ribbon cutting, another ribbon cutting of Airport Road, we'll give you the details, dates and times, et cetera, here soon, but Wednesday, we are probably going to open officially Airport Road between US Forty-Five Cunningham Avenue and Willow Road. It's a three-quarter mile stretch by Farm and Fleets and Frasca, et cetera, so we're hopeful with weather holding together here, the striping and final touches will be done, and restoration, seating, et cetera, will be next spring, but at least the road will be opened, and that roundabout detour will be no longer needed for those who use Airport Road. So, just another commentary on this project was funded, basically with TIF funds, Tax Incriment Financing, Area Four, and IDOT Economic Development Program money, and TARP money, which is Truck Access Road Program money. I mentioned this to you for one reason, you may have read recently, that three hundred million dollars in local motor fuel tax money, not local state motor fuel tax money, has been rebudgeted in the general fund at the state level. Recently, it's come to my attention that fifty million of the three hundred million is impacting counties, townships, and municipalities. Where it impacts us, the city of Urbana, is, is that the IDOT Economic Development Program would not, no longer be funded. If this occurs in future years, that would mean such monies without which we would not have built, rebuilt Airport Road. The Truck Access Road Program, TARP, is no longer a program for the year, and another funding source that we receive annually, funds, is High Growth Program. Because of our population increase from each ten-year decennial census, we are eligible for about twenty-eight thousand dollars a year. That will not be coming to us this fiscal year. So, if this continues, that helps, especially in the arena of economic development-related fund sources, and we've used EDP money for other projects in Urbana before, again, without which would have made difficult, or, I mean, projects may not have happened. A classic, good example is the bumper plant, Flexing Gate, expanded to Guardian West, which generated, I don't know how many hundreds of jobs. It was a multimillion-dollar intersection that we had to build there at University Avenue. EDP funded for at least fifty percent of that, so I just wanted to give those examples. I realize we all may have to sacrifice to help the state budgets, but this is how it's impacting us here locally. That's it.
Questions for Bill? Dennis?
Bill, this is not part of your report, but I'm wondering if you have any updates on the status, the ultimate status of Windsor Road, and the construction that was done for that, that opened, I guess, a year ago, year and a half ago? The city, the county, the state, we're all not quite assured about the ultimate merit of the road, and is there still discussion about that? Has that issue been resolved for us?
The issue has not been resolved, and I cannot comment on it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to report to council, follow-up from a couple of issues that were raised last week. We had a number of people come in last week to request the city to consider committing to a hundred percent electric in the future, and several other environmental topics, so I've asked the Sustainability Advisory Commission, Scott Tess, to consider each of those, I think there were three separate topics that were raised, so the SAC will be considering each of those, and making recommendations to the council. And I'm also exploring ways to involve at least one youth on the Sustainability Advisory Commission, because I think they made a good point. It's really about their future, so I'm looking specifically at the high school age youth to be participating in some way, so we'll, we'll see what we can come up with on that.
Eric?
I just wanted to say publicly, I've sent an email to the, the youngsters, to the I Matter people, suggesting that they also give Champagne a report card.
Bill?
We do have high schoolers on other committees, too.
At least one other.
The Arts Commission, or...
Do we have one on the arts?
HRC as well.
Well, Human Relations Committee.
HRC, for sure, there's an official...
For sure. I don't think anybody on Public Arts right now is a high schooler, but that's actually not a bad idea.
And then I had another, just a suggestion, that, I know in the paper, I saw some, a story on zoning problems in like, in the Scottswood area, and outside the city, in the county, and before, I know our community development inspectors were able to help with that apartment building up by Rantoul, and we had some contracts with county, I just wondered if we could get an update on whether anything like that could be done to help with the zoning enforcement, and if not today, then maybe next week or something, if we could get some, some information about that.
Yes. Okay. Last item of new business is the appointment to boards and commissions. I'd like to appoint Matt Rajic as the staff representative to the Champagne County Community Action Board, and for folks who don't know what that is, it's the Advisory Board for the Champagne County Regional Planning Commission, it oversees Community Services Division on behalf of low-income and at-risk residents of Champagne County. So, we, a number of public and county and city representatives are on this board, and Matt, who is in our Grants Department, will serve as our representative if you approve it. Is there a motion? Dennis?
Yeah, I'd like to make that motion to appoint Matt Rajic to the Champagne County Community Action Board. He's a very strong staff person, and I think he would represent the city very well.
I agree.
I'll second.
Seconded by Eric. Any comments? Aaron?
Were there, were there any other people who applied, or was it just an appointment that...
This is a appointment, staff appointment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Aaron?
So, since the other business is done, I had a question that I wanted to, see if I can get some clarity on. Just moving forward, if a council member makes a request of staff, does that staff member or department head have the autonomy to refuse to provide that service or that, that request? And if there's an official, if that's the clerk's answer, or the mayor's answer, I'd like for it to be an official answer.
Actually, it, the mayor makes the final decision on that. Dennis?
I remember being constantly told that, that individual council members don't direct staff, city council can, by voting, or the mayor can, but city council members don't actually direct staff.
So, and then, when it relates, as it relates to the issue earlier about the presentations, what is the difference between asking for a presentation to be given to us ahead of time? What's the difference in that and us having a packet, which is presented to us days ahead of time, so that we can review the information, prepare for the information, and ask questions? Why would that be any different from a presentation standpoint, that staff is doing?
In this case, it's an oral presentation.
No, it's more than an oral presentation?
Accompanied by PowerPoint slides.
Okay, so there is actual documents that are going to be presented, and I'm asking, what is the difference between those actual documents being presented to city council, so that we can see them ahead of time, and a, and why we're being denied to see these ahead of time? What's the difference in the packet that we get every Thursday, and what, what we're going to get on, on next Monday as a presentation?
Did you want to comment?
I'd like for it to come from the mayor, or whoever's supposed to make the decision as a, I don't know if it's Charlie...
Your fellow city council member would like to comment, and I'm calling on her.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine.
So, I know myself, and I know several other people on the council have written reports with lots of data, and to me, data's meaningless without methodology, and in order to understand the methodology, it needs to be written. From what I understand, with the reports that are coming to city council, it seems to me that the quarterly reports are updates, and, and for that, I think that there should be an established methodology. That said, I think it makes more sense to have a yearly report that talks about that methodology, and talks about those numbers. Having, having a PowerPoint that's given to us at the time, I think, is fine, and the reason I think it's fine is because it's very difficult to understand those numbers without having the methodology, so my, my point here is, is that I would like to see an annual report, which would help us understand things, and perhaps, moving forward, would make it much easier to understand a PowerPoint presentation.
Is there going to be an answer to my question?
I think I've answered it. In my opinion, I've answered it.
Okay, so, the question to be stated clearly is, that I'm asking is, what is the difference between documents that are being presented to the city council by staff, and a packet that we're provided to peruse and make sure that we have, we understand, and we get that Thursday, every Thursday? So, what is the difference between those documents that we get in our packet, and documents that are going to be presented to us by staff? Why can't we get those at the same time? I don't understand the difference between that.
This is an update that's going to be given on Monday, it will then be posted to the city website, and we will follow up on December fourth with a discussion.
And that is not an answer to my question, when I ask, what is the difference between the two? You're giving me a response that you're repeating, but I'm asking, is there a difference between the packet materials that we get on Thursdays, and the documents that are going to be presented to us next Monday? Why can't we have those documents at the same time?
The difference is in the format, in the way it's presented. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.